Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Policy Committee, back in person still, which is nice and reassuring. Just to say that the meeting is recorded, as per usual, owing to some changes to the way in which we do record and broadcast meetings. The Public Gallery isn't filmed and those asking public questions will not be filmed either, but their voice will be recorded. And other than that, I think that's all I've got in terms of Chair's announcements, I hope anyway, but the Monitoring Officer has an announcement, so I'll hand over to Mike Graham.
Thank you, Leader. In March 2020, following the first lockdown and the government advice not to meet in person, the council made interim arrangements for democratic oversight of the council. This included arrangements under the Constitution for Policy Committee to assume greater responsibility for decisions with a smaller quorum of councillors. In addition, Policy Committee allowed greater flexibility in the existing decision book process by removing the 10-day call-in period for councillors, so as to allow more urgent decisions to be made through that mechanism if necessary. In granting this greater flexibility, the Policy Committee also delegated authority to me as Monitoring Officer to bring the arrangement to an end in accordance with government guidelines and restrictions on public gatherings. Since July 2021, the government has effectively removed all restrictions on meeting in public. In-person meetings are taking place and the democratic oversight of council business is back to normal. There is greater resilience now, given the council's adoption of hybrid meetings like this. So for all these reasons, I consider that there is no longer any justification for the call-in procedure to be disapp lied, and therefore exercising my delegation to restore the decision book process as set out in the Constitution.
Thank you, Monitoring Officer. Nice and straightforward, I think. Two things I remember that I should have said, if I could ask all members when called to speak, to pop your microphones on, as per usual, and a reminder that we have some officers joining us via the magic box of Microsoft Teams, and we'll call them to speak at the appropriate moment as well. So we move on to item two, declarations of interest. Do we have any? Wonderful. Item three, minutes of the last meeting, anything on those? And are we all happy for me to sign those as a correct record? Beautiful. On then to petitions and questions. No petitions tonight, but we do have a few questions, including three from members of the public, and I can see three people in the gallery, so I'm optimistic this is going to go well. First, we have Mr. Wellham asking a question of the Lead Councillor for Corporate and Consumer Services. Is Mr. Wellham here? Yes. Wonderful. If you come up to the public microphone there, and there's a big button towards the bottom, if you press that, hopefully it will light up in red and we'll all hear you as you ask your question. In your entire.
Good evening. The pandemic has resulted in many employees working from home. Employees face, employers, sorry, face two major challenges. Firstly, ensuring that production from home delivers the required standards and productivity. Secondly, motivating employees. I have in mind Hersberg's motivation and hygiene theory. An employee feels that their contribution adds value to the organisation's objective if, sorry about that, it is recognised and respected by colleagues rather than they are bullied automatons. An extremely simplified idiosyncratic summary. Oh, the question's up there. Can you read the question for me, please?
Okay, I can read it out for you if you want, Mr. Wellham.
It's basically getting their laptop out.
Reading Borough Council internal audit report that staff resources are stressed.
Oh, sorry. Yes, right, right. Thank you.
How has Reading Borough Council responded to the two challenges? Is that right?
Correct.
Wonderful. If I could just ask you to turn your microphone off while I call councillor McEwan to respond.
Firstly, I'd like to thank Mr. Wellham for his question. The council's workforce has continued to deliver many business-as-usual services throughout the pandemic in challenging circumstances, as well as delivering several new services, such as the one Reading Community Hub, and setting up a new COVID response team to deal with supply and distribution of PPE, community testing, et cetera. In addition, we have delivered several improvements, including signing a new ledger contract and transitioning to a new IT operating model. The council conducted a staff survey in May 2020 and again in December 2020 to assess staff's views on working remotely. The majority felt that they were more productive working remotely than they had been in the office. A one-to-one supervision policy requires all managers to carry out regular one-to-one meetings with their staff to discuss workload and productivity, as well as wellbeing, health and safety behaviours. Issues of concern, e.g. performance, should be assessed through this process initially, and support is available for managers from the HR advisory team to assist them if needed. The council's managing poor performance policy may be used if informal action to improve performance has not been successful. The council's people strategy recognises that our staff are central to achieving our vision of providing excellent services to Reading. Our aim is to celebrate high performance and power in able people and create an environment that promotes diversity and inclusion, continual improvement and greater collaboration across the council. Our team, Reading Values, that's working together, being ambitious, efficient and making a difference for Reading, underpin the way we work today. We have a range of policies and initiatives in place to achieve this and motivate all of our staff. Examples include a leadership and management development programme for all levels of manager to ensure that they role model our team, Reading Values, and behave in a way that inspires, motivates and supports employees. Our wellbeing strategy is underpinned by monthly wellbeing newsletters, which give practical advice and support to help staff manage both their physical and mental health, as well as access to a confidential employee assistance programme, which includes access to counselling amongst other services. We conduct regular staff surveys to ensure that our people strategy is achieving its aims. The most recent survey from April 21 showed that 95% of staff feel that they make a valuable contribution to the success of the council by doing their job, and 89% felt that their line manager shows genuine interest in their wellbeing.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. Mr. Wellham, you may ask a supplementary question if you wish, that seeks to clarify some element of councillor McEwan's answer, but it can't introduce an entirely new question or new content. Did you wish to ask us something?
No, I thank councillor McEwan. I have no supplementary question.
Thank you very much. I thank you for bringing Hersberg to my attention. I spent some of this afternoon reading the abstract of a doctoral thesis, seeking to apply his thought to the Korean Army. It was most peculiar.
So how many bees did you count up to?
Alas, too few. I move on to question number two, which is Richard Stainforth for asking the Lead Councillor for Education.
Don't say it like that, Chair. I'm benefiting the public and trying to make Reading more popular. You're very, very welcome down there sometimes to try and do the same. Anyway, thank you, Chair, for your charming introduction. My question is to the Lead Councillor for Education. Does the Lead Councillor for Education support an extension of the London fringe allowance to Reading?
Councillor Pearce?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Stainforth for his question. Back in 2016, I put forward a motion to this council that said the fringe allowance should be extended to Reading. The motion passed unanimously. We wrote to and lobbied the Department for Education, but sadly, to no policy change with the fringe allowance still stopping at our near neighbours Bracknell. This needs to be taken in a wider context. Now, former Education Secretary Gavin Williamson said last year, "We owe everyone working in schools an enormous debt of thanks for what they have done this year, and I'm especially grateful to our heads and senior leaders." Perhaps debt is the key word in that statement, because this summer Williamson told the school teachers' pay and review body not to even bother looking at teachers' pay, as he and his government were going to freeze it. A freeze in pay is, of course, in reality, a cut, as prices are going up, but pay remains the same, so it certainly will mean more debt for teachers. The Tories' on-off decade-long pay freeze for teachers means that a teacher that has been in the classroom for six years will have lost £357 a month, or £4,281 per year. That is over £40,000 this decade. This would have been a handy house deposit for many. During this time, as I'm sure we're all aware, house prices have continued to rise. The average for Reading is around £300,000, up nearly £10,000 this year alone, and is £266,000 for first-time buyers. All of this has a knock-on effect with the recruitment and especially retention of teachers, with 27% of young teachers quitting within their first three years. So to get back to the question, yes, I would like to see the fringe allowance extended to Reading and fully support this extension. In an ideal world, teachers would have been fairly paid by this government in the last 10 years, but sadly, this has not been the case. In a very competitive market and with higher house prices in our area than in some places that do receive the fringe, this seems to be an unfair anomaly that the government should fix.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Mr. Stainforth, did you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, councillor Brock. As the governor of two Reading schools, I'm well aware that this impacts on the recruitment of teachers. The addition to their salary by web London fringe allowance even outweighs the disbenefits of living in Bracknell. It is five years since Reading wrote to the Department of Education asking for the extension. Is it time that Reading Borough Council wrote again? And is there anything we can do other than just writing a letter?
Councillor Pearce?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea to start lobbying again with the new Education Secretary. I think a new campaign will open our arms and contact him. And I think in terms of governorship, you know, we're of a political party stripe and our government isn't, so letters and lobbying from head teachers is probably frankly going to have more effect than us. So if you could encourage head teachers to lobby government as well for this change, that'd be very welcome.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stainforth. Thank you, councillor Pearce. Takes us on to question three, which is Anne Daly to the Lead Councillor for Corporate and Consumer Services.
Thank you, councillor Brock. Can the Lead Councillor detail how Reading Borough Council plans to incorporate the methods outlined in the August 2021 Council Tax Collection Best Practice Guidance for Local Authorities into its current debt recovery practices? Especially the ability of councils to make an early request for attachments to earnings or benefits, so avoiding adding costs and increasing vulnerable residents' debt, stress and anxiety. Thank you, somebody pointed out, and of course, only after a liability order has been granted.
Thank you, Miss Daly. If I could just ask you to turn your microphone off and councillor McEwan to respond.
Firstly, I'd like to thank Miss Daly for the question. The revenues team have reviewed the Council Tax Collection Best Practice Guidance for Local Authorities, recently published at the link detailed. The revenues team continue to work innovatively to deal with the needs and circumstances of debtors while maintaining high rates of collection and prevention of arrears. They recognise that supportive recovery techniques can significantly improve outcomes, both for authorities and for debtors. Having reviewed the steps outlined in the Best Practice Guidance, the team advises as follows. The team recognises the importance of the design of the local council tax support scheme. A proposal to consult on amendments to the current scheme will be put before the committee this evening. These proposals seek to provide a more generous scheme than currently in place. As well as a local council tax support, a residence bill can be reduced by a wide range of discounts and exemptions that reflects individual circumstances. These are now actively promoted on each council tax bill following review of our literature during implementation of the Citizens Advice Council Tax Protocol. Frontline staff have the right knowledge and information to give accurate advice to those council taxpayers who may have limited understanding about the support that is available. This helps to ensure that everyone pays the right level of council tax, which can be crucial in supporting those who are potentially financially vulnerable. Frontline staff have also been provided with details of the recently published Debt Management Vulnerability Toolkit, which training is to be scheduled, and there's a link below to that. The team also continue to build on information available online. Following the approval of the corporate debt policy, the aim is to work towards a single view of debt, to ensure that multiple debts are brought forward under a single system so they can offer a well-informed support if households fall behind in their payments. Revenue managers of billing authorities across Berkshire every month to explore and better understand the latest trends in council tax collection. These meetings allow authorities to discuss solutions to emerging challenges. The team work with both internal and external debt advisers at any point in the collection process, and regular discussions are held between the local debt agencies in order to ensure where each group is fully sighted of the local trends in council tax collection. The service has adopted the Citizens Advice Protocol, and the team regularly review their signposting referrals process to maximise the opportunities to guide people towards debt-free advice where appropriate. This information is contained within all council tax bills. The revenues team have developed localised reminders that are delivered through multiple platforms, including texts. The team are looking to extend this further using informal email reminders. Where residents fail to respond to a bill or miss an instalment, the team will carefully consider the options available to them in their attempt to engage with the individual. Soft text reminders will be issued prior to any statutory reminder process. It is only where attempts to engage bill payers have not succeeded that the team will consider the option of applying for a liability order. The team makes continued efforts to engage and support their residents alongside their application for a liability order. For instance, after a court summons is issued, the team offer an automatically generated repayment plan in order to try to avoid further enforcement action. Where local authorities seek a liability order, they are able to charge the responsible costs incurred in obtaining the court summons and liability order and add these costs to the council tax bill. In making an assessment of the costs, they also bear in mind that the costs will be borne by the resident already having difficulties paying their bill, and those costs should be kept as low as possible. They do, however, have to consider the cost of recovery will be the same no matter the circumstances of the resident. Unfortunately, legislation does not allow an early request for attachments of benefits or earning. A liability order must be obtained before this action can be undertaken. The team have a range of options open to them when they decide to take further action following a missed instalment. The team also seek to use these options before taking another action, such as referring a case to enforcement agents. The team would also always look to agree an affordable repayment plan, feeling that an attachment to benefit or earning would be preferable with enforcement agents as a last resort. The team are often particularly cautious about applying two attachments of earnings to residents known to be in positions of vulnerability. Where the application of two orders would cause financial hardship, an order may be withdrawn, and the team will always consider an individual circumstances before taking any form of enforcement action, and seek to work with the individual for the best outcome.
Thank you, councillor McEwan, if you just pop your mic off. Miss Daly, did you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I welcome the single view of debt aim in your answer, and understand the team are often particularly cautious about applying two attachments of earnings. However, would you not agree that this could be better than bailiffs trying to recover large amounts from vulnerable residents?
Thank you, Miss Daly. Just to pop, thank you, councillor McEwan.
I would like to thank you for your response there. It is something that we could address, and we will respond to you to that query.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. Thank you, Miss Daly. Takes us to the end then of public questions, so thank you to those who came along to ask their questions, and takes us on to councillor questions. Firstly, we have councillor White to lead councillor for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. This one is on improving road safety on Crescent Road. On the 20th of July 2020, responding to my question on Crescent Road road safety improvements, councillor Page stated that over £87,000 generated by the Alfred Sutton School expansion had been spent already on the 20mph speed limit and the resident parking scheme in the area. Internal audit have investigated this claim and discovered that it was incorrect. In fact, after seven years, the money is still unspent. Would the Lead Councillor take this opportunity to apologise and correct his answer? Green councillors want this money spent on permanent improvements to road safety in Crescent Road and the surrounding area, where children from three schools, soon to be four, regularly walk and cycle to and from school. Does the Lead Councillor agree, and will he pledge, seven years after receiving the money, to spend it on road safety measures to protect our children?
And councillor White? Councillor Page?
Thank you, Chair. I thank councillor White for his question. Unlike many Section 106 agreements that require spending within a specified time, the Alfred Sutton payment was not time-limited, nor was it specified for any scheme other than, I quote, "transport improvements identified in the eastern, southeastern and central Reading Action Plan areas of the council's local transport plan for the time being in force", end of quote. As councillor White will be aware, the Section 106 funding received from Alfred Sutton School was in fact pooled, along with other relevant payments, to form a larger funding pot for the delivery of schemes in the eastern, southeastern and central Reading Action Plan areas, which form part of the council's local transport plan. At the time that I responded to your last question in July 2020, the officers delivering the 20mph and residence parking schemes understood that these had been secured against the Alfred Sutton funding. It's now understood that the alignment of the available funds has not been completed, and therefore, from a financial audit perspective, the spend is not shown. However, it remains the case that the scheme delivery was in full compliance with the allocation policy. The intention is to align that spend with the Section 106 from the Alfred Sutton School as soon as possible. In respect of the request for permanent improvements on Crescent Road, this would be premature, ahead of the Experimental School Street, which is due to start on the 1st of November. Councillor White will be aware that this was approved at the last Strategic Environment Planning and Transport Committee on the 30th of June this year, following local consultations conducted by Maiden Early, the UTC Reading and Alfred Sutton Primary Schools. Over 150 consultation responses were considered, and there was a clear majority in support of the trial. This will be the most ambitious school-street trial to date in Reading, and it is important that we assess and monitor its effectiveness in conjunction with the local community, schools and residents. Any more permanent road safety features on Crescent Road or the wider area can then be considered in the context of the school-street review and subsequent local consultations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor White, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Chair. My supplementary is, will it be another seven years until this road safety money is spent?
Councillor Page?
Chair, councillor White should perhaps look at the terms of the Section 106 payment. It is not time-limited. I very much hope that in technical terms, this money will be spent in the very near future. In fact, I would argue the money has already been spent on the 20MPH and residence parking schemes, and clearly any further expenditure to be incurred in the area will be the subject of further consultations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. Takes us on to councillor question two, which is councillor White again to lead councillor for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. This question is on a transit site for the travelling community in Reading. The travelling community has spent time on various pieces of land in Reading recently. In East Reading, lands such as Palmer Park, Central Park and the Crescent Road playing fields have been camped on. With no access to facilities such as adequate toilets and bins as standard, these sites clearly aren't appropriate. I respect the travelling community's way of life, and I think one way the council could show respect would be to create a transit site for the travelling community within Reading with decent facilities. I know that this has been looked at before. Please, can the Lead Councillor update me on the current situation and what is being done to identify land for a transit site?
Thank you, councillor White. Councillor Page?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I thank councillor White for his question. As I've explained on previous occasions, the council has assessed the need for accommodation for gypsies and travellers in the Gypsy and Traveller Travelling Showpeople and Houseboat Dweller Accommodation Assessment, published in 2017. Alongside permanent provision, this identified a need for a transit site that could accommodate up to 10 caravans. As a result, the council has been working for some time to try to identify a site or sites to meet both the permanent and transit needs for gypsies and travellers. As Reading is a tightly drawn urban authority, virtually all sites are in close proximity to existing residential properties, and where there are greenfield sites, they are often at high risk of flooding. After a thorough assessment of 80 council-owned sites, the council did identify a possible site at Cow Lane in 2017 and carried out a consultation on it. This site did not proceed as it was required for a new school, as reported to Policy Committee in June 2018. Since then, the council has continued to try to identify possible sites within its boundaries to meet permanent and transit needs, as well as working with neighbouring authorities on whether our needs for permanent accommodation can be met on less constrained land just outside the borough boundaries. This work is ongoing, and further information on progress will be reported when it is appropriate to do so, but identifying a site is a difficult process, given the very tight constraints on land in Reading. The council continues to actively work on this as a matter of importance, and I'm pleased to say that a report about transit site provision is expected to be brought to the next Policy Committee on the 1st of November.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor White, did you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair. No, thank you. I'll look forward to the report in November.
Thank you. Taking us on then to councillor question three. Councillor White again, this time to the Lead Councillor for Children. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. Reading Council, this question is on Reading Council supporting unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. Children who have fled the world's most dangerous situations and made it to the UK without their parents deserve protection and support. Kent County Council say they are no longer able to take unaccompanied asylum-seeking children because of the number that have turned up. The government ask that councils take unaccompanied asylum-seeking children at 0.07% of their child population. Reading hasn't met this target. Does the Lead Councillor agree with myself and Green councillors that Reading should be taking its fair share of unaccompanied asylum-seeking children? And what will the Lead Councillor do to make sure Reading meets this target?
Thank you, councillor White. Councillor Terry?
Chair, Reading Through Brighter Futures for Children currently has 21 unaccompanied asylum-seeking young people under the age of 18 in care, and 24 over the age of 18 receiving support as care leavers. All 24 young people were taken into care when they were under 18 years of age and are now receiving support via a personal advisor for as long as they should need or want it up to the age of 25. The Voluntary National Transfer Protocol is based on local authorities taking 0.07% of their under-18 population as unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. To meet that percentage, Brighter Futures for Children would be providing support to 26 of these young children and young people. It should be noted that Brighter Futures for Children is one of the top-ranked children's services across the South East in relation to meeting this target. Target. The Voluntary National Transfer... Oh, sorry. Of the 21 children in care... Of the 21 children in care, six were from applications made by young people, adults in the Mecure Hotel to have age assessments undertaken as they are disputing their Home Office age assessment. When young people enter the country, there is an appearance and demeanour assessment by the senior immigration officer to determine whether or not the young person is under 18 years of age. Until recently, this was to determine whether or not the young person was under 25 years of age. More recently, the Home Office have employed social workers to undertake a fuller but relatively short assessment. In order to be lawful, age assessments must be Mertin compliant. Unfortunately, the Home Office assessments are not fully Mertin compliant, hence that Brighter Futures for Children is duty-bound to undertake these assessments and must take these young people into our care whilst doing so. I point this out in terms of the complexity, but also at any given time, we don't know whether they, some of these are unaccompanied asylum-seeking children or not. Brighter Futures for Children is supporting the National Transfer Scheme Regional Rota for more equitable share across local authorities and has taken unaccompanied asylum-seeking children through the South East Rota, as well as through self-presentation to children's Brighter Futures for Children is committed to providing the very best support and/or care for these young people so that they can recover from their experiences and meet their potential in relation to health, education, employment or training, as well as becoming effective adults who will contribute to our local communities. As you can see councillor White, Reading is doing its fair share and at any given time is likely to be meeting the 0.07% nominal target. I, together with my Labour colleagues and I hope all councillors, will ensure that Reading remains a welcoming and supportive new home for these children and young people.
Thank you councillor Terry. Councillor White, did you have a supplementary?
Yes, please Chair. Yeah, thank you very much for the answer councillor Terry and all the hard work of everyone involved. I appreciate that yeah, assessments are ongoing, as you say, and things can change. When would you think we will meet the target? Are we talking it's going to be, assessments will be completed within the month and we will have a better idea or what do you think?
I think... Thank you Chair. I mean, I think in answer to councillor White, the point I'm making is that we've 21 unaccompanied asylum seekers already. We have 24 who've now passed that age but previously, so at any given time, that could have been three months ago, we might have had six of them and therefore we were over the target. And given that we have people coming into our country all the time and there's the Rota and so on, by next week, maybe six more young people or children will have turned up and they will meet the target. So I think there's something less about meeting an absolute target and just being sure that as a local authority through our company, Brighter Futures for Children, that we are doing everything that we can to make sure that when children and young people do present themselves to us, that we make sure that we look after them, that we make sure we have responsibility for them and we take care of them. So I don't think you can be absolute about this, I think it goes up and down. I mean, if you'd asked me this question maybe some months ago, we would have been at the target. So I think it's something we need to just understand that we are performing one of the best authorities in the South East in terms of accepting unaccompanied asylum-seeking children and young people and will continue to do that.
Thank you councillor Terry. Right, takes us to the end then of questions and on to item five, decision books, sort of split into two parts this evening. So on the one hand, we have our standard presentation of those decision books that have been published since the previous reports to Policy Committee. And we also have a request for review of one decision book, which is the provision of on-street and off-street parking for the Royal Berkshire Hospital NHS Trust, which was requested by councillor White. So if I could maybe break down the recommended actions, let's take the first part first, as it were, and everybody's content that we note the decision books that have been published? Excellent, you know, you'll nod, but thank you. And move on then to the second part, which is the retrospective review element. Now, do I have Mr Crosby, the interim Assistant Director of Planning, Transport and Regulatory Services here to introduce? I do, because I've popped up on the magic box. Over to you.
Good evening Chair, thank you. This decision book was published earlier, this couple of months ago now, in order to formalise an agreement which we had been negotiating with the RBH for a period of time. The arrangements over Covid meant that we were offering free car parking to the RBH and at the end of Covid, when the government removed the requirement for us to provide that free parking, we extended it for a short period before wanting to formalise our arrangements with the RBH. The RBH requested for some parking within Queens Road Car Park as well as some on-street car parking and that is what we've been able to provide to them. The decision book set that out as the agreement that we would enter into as of 1st November in order to deliver some of the framework and infrastructure around that. Subsequently, as you said Chair, councillor White has called in this decision book and requested some further detail, which was provided by way of an appendix to the report this evening. And I've also responded to some additional questions around the financial arrangements over the last couple of days with councillor McElroy. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Assistant Director. Councillor White, I assume you're wishing to speak?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Green councillors support the council working with the hospital on parking arrangements for hospital staff. We called in the hospital parking decision book because we felt that the process was particularly poor and we think it could be improved so that residents aren't left in the dark as to what's happening in their own roads. For example, this decision book went out on July 30th with a go-live date of August 1st, just a couple of days. There wasn't basic financial information in the report. There was no consultation with ward councillors. There was no informal consultation with residents. Residents weren't even informed that this was happening. It was picked up on by the local papers as something that was of interest and we definitely informed residents because we thought it would be of interest to them. The council also keeps saying that there's going to be no impact on residents, but as some of the bays are shared between pay and display and permit parking, there's definitely going to be some impact because those bays are shared. I was disappointed that the lead councillor didn't insist on a letter going out before the decision book was published so that residents found out what was going on in their own roads directly from the council. Following us and many residents raising this issue with the council, the council has belatedly put out a letter explaining what is happening and a number of these problems are acknowledged in the, I think it was Appendix 2, follow-on report that the council has created especially for this meeting. As I said at the start, Green councillors fully support the council working with the hospital on parking. However, I think the council needs to follow a reasonable process which involves keeping people informed. I have to say that when I followed up our concerns with council officers, that they were very prompt at answering questions and helpful in answering them. But if more information had have been put in the report and residents had been kept informed, we could have saved a lot of time and concern. I was going to ask that we get rid of the councillor review process we've got at the moment, which because the councillor call-in process was paused. But the power of my email this afternoon appeared to make that happen as if by magic. So I thank Michael Graham for using his delegated powers to bring back the councillor call-in, which I think could have paused this action and resulted in a better work from the council, including keeping residents informed. So I'm glad that now that we have the call-in back, we'll be able to head off any problems in future. Thank you very much.
Councillor Page?
Thank you Chair. One of the reasons a letter was needed subsequently was because of the deliberate misrepresentation of the proposals by councillor White, his colleagues and a number of others. I quote, and this is stuff that was on the, what's it called, the East Reading Community page and retweeted by Green councillors, Redlands residents are set to lose 178 residence parking spaces. A complete and utter fabrication. And it was that that obviously set...
Sorry Chair. If you turn your mic off please councillor White.
Apologies. And it was that deliberate misrepresentation by some people that obviously caused some local concern. No residence parking spaces are being lost whatsoever. The proposal affects only shared pay and display bays between 8.30 and 5.30 and in no way impacts the total provision of residence or availability of residence parking spaces because those bays then revert to resident permit holders outside of that 8.30 to 5.30pm. We consulted Redlands residents extensively over a number of years with regard to a residence parking scheme that would provide shared pay and display bays. And those pay and display bays were introduced with the full expectation they would be used by paying customers as well and that those bays would then revert to residence permits overnight. And the arrangement with the RBH relates to the pay and display spaces alone during those periods. Now, I realise that in frenetic green campaigning, truth is often the first casualty, as has been the case here. But I would, through you Chair, ask councillor White to apologise for the deliberate misrepresentation of these proposals to local residents. And that's why a letter subsequently had to go out. The Queens Road Car Park is obviously featured in the proposal as well and I was very keen to see our officers working closely with the RBH to support their staff in having delivered phenomenal services during the Covid pandemic. And with the changed arrangements from the end of July, I was very keen, as were council officers, to see this authority playing its full part in supporting rather than undermining the RBH as Green councillors have been active. Now, let's just nail this, there are no loss of residence parking spaces and I would therefore, through you councillor Brock, ask councillor White to apologise on behalf of himself and his colleagues for the misrepresentation, the false concern caused to local residents that we have then had to spend officer time and resources undoing. It has been a phenomenal waste of time. It has injected unnecessary bad blood because the RBH misunderstood that we were then going cold on the arrangement to support their staff as a result of this irresponsible campaigning. I think I've said sufficient Chair for us to reject entirely the comments that councillor White and his colleagues have made.
Thank you councillor Page. I mean, points made perfectly clearly, I think with no ambiguity. And since I have no other indications, I would suggest that we take Recommended Action 2.2 and note that we have reviewed the decision, agreed? Wonderful, thank you very much everyone. Moving us on then to item six, the cemetery and crematorium rules and regulations. So I have Diane Wiltshire here to present. Over to you.
Good evening, thank you Chair. So in June, we presented on the proposed changes to the cemetery rules, regulations and burial options, along with the rationale that prompted the review. And the request to hold public consultation on the proposals was approved by the Policy Committee. The consultation was proactively advertised and invitations to participate were issued to a number of groups representative of our culturally diverse communities. Presentations were also given via teams, to local mosque leaders, representatives from the Pakistani community and to the wider Muslim community. A presentation was offered to other ethnic groups, but the invitation was not taken up. Full details of the consultation launch can be found in paragraph 7.2 of the report and also at the beginning of the results summary, which is included at Appendix 2. Both documents are in your meeting pack. The consultation focused on four key areas: the rules and regulations, grave types, opening hours and accessibility. The presentation this evening recaps on the initial proposals, where the proposals have been changed as a result of the consultation and the next steps. So before I focus on the four key topics, I would like to give you an indication of the demographic of the respondents. 255 individuals responded to the actual consultation questionnaire itself. The majority of respondents, 43%, were between 45 and 64 years of age and the rest were split relatively evenly across the age groups. 246 respondents stated their religion. 39% were Christian, 29% were Muslim and 25 declared either no religion or they preferred not to say. 3% of respondents represented a mix of other religions. We've also taken into consideration the feedback obtained during the two meetings with the Muslim community, along with any follow-up correspondence. And the granular detail of the consultation statistics are shown in Appendix 2. So back to the four key topics and how the consultation responded. Looking at rules and regulations, the revised rules and regulations aim to provide clearer definitions and instructions, along with a commitment to improve transparency of our cemetery operations to allow better understanding of the service by our users. Overall, the rules and regulations were positively received, with 84% of respondents stating that yes, the rules were easy to understand and 78% stating that they are balanced and fair. One very clear message however, that did come through the comments within the consultation was a dissatisfaction with the lack of enforcement or inconsistency of enforcement of the regulations and this issue will be addressed going forward. So looking at proposals on the new grave types, it would recognise that although our current grave options meet the needs of most faith types, they did not meet the needs of the Muslim community. The Muslim faith requires the grave to be protected in order to prevent against anyone or anything from walking or driving over the deceased. Our initial proposal was to introduce a new mounded grave option. This is a recognised grave type within the Muslim community and it meets the needs of their faith. It also is a more cost-effective option, as we know from our conversations with Muslim families, that the cost of traditional curb sets and memorials can be too costly. The proposal was received favourably with 58% of the Muslim community who responded stating the grave types available were either acceptable or did not apply to them. But 36 of the Muslim respondents did not believe the grave types were acceptable. Upon looking deeper into these responses, their preference was to allow traditional grave types alongside mounded and lawn types. Only five individuals stated that traditional graves would be the only acceptable option to them. Based on these facts, we were not initially going to consider traditional graves, however, given the number of individuals who specified traditional only, we think we can accommodate this. But this decision will impact on the cemetery layout and our operations. The unusual shape of the area known as Westfield restricts how graves can be laid out. So if we are to achieve maximum capacity, given the additional maintenance required for traditional and mounded graves, these types will be grouped together. We know some Muslim families do still accept lawn graves, again albeit in very small numbers, so a lawn grave option will remain, but this will be placed in a different location within the Muslim section. As these changes result in three different grave types in that section, there will be no uniformity to the area. to the area. This will have a negative impact on the general aesthetics of this part of the cemetery, and the maintenance costs will be marginally more expensive due to three different maintenance methods. It will however reduce the non-adherence of the regulations, as the adornments and fencing placed around graves will no longer be necessary. Again, due to the limited space within Westfield, we are unable to provide vaulted graves in the lawn grave area. So to recap, the grave types available will be determined by the location of the grave within the cemetery. In Mayfield, which is the multi-faith, non-faith area, they have sections for lawn graves and a traditional grave section. Westfield will be split into two. We have a multi-faith and a non-faith, and only lawn graves will be permitted in that area. And in the Muslim section of Westfield, there will now be lawn, mounded and traditional graves permitted. There were some other minor changes to available burial options. As the burial ground capacity is limited at our Henley Road Cemetery, with approximately eight years of burial space remaining, the pre-purchase of plots is now no longer possible, and this will include burial plots adjacent to each other. All burial plots are now used sequentially. A family can still choose to be buried together though, but the only option will be for a single grave plot to be prepared for burials at either double or treble depth. And the choice to have a double or treble depth grave will need to be made at the time of the first burial into the plot. The consultation feedback indicated that this would not be a problem. Onto opening times. The proposal to extend the opening times was positively received. Some feedback indicated a perceived demand for a Muslim burial provision, 365 days a year, although the burial data for the last four years shows that this is not necessary, as the actual demand for out-of-hour burials has been very low, with an average of just two per annum. We did however amend our initial proposal of removing Muslim burial option provision on public holidays. Muslim burials will be possible now on a public holiday, except for Christmas Day, Boxing Day, New Year's Day and Good Friday. It should be noted, there is no provision to pre-book burials on these dates, so any burial taking place on a public holiday will be subject to the same terms as the existing on-call service. And the exclusion of burials on a Sunday is to remain. In terms of accessibility, the proposal to widen the grass walkways in any new area of the cemetery was again positively received. And we are also looking at other accessibility options across the cemetery, such as an automatic door to the office, dropped curbs and improved wheelchair ramps. So in terms of next steps, we now seek approval of the recommendations as set out in section two of the report. And subject to the outcome of the policy committee, a programme of work will commence to initiate and complete the necessary changes. This will cover communications to grave owners, users, funeral directors, stone masons etc., improvement and update of the website and relative literature. A meeting will be arranged with the mosque leaders to ensure clarity on the changes is communicated clearly and is fully understood. And there will be a sensitive but proactive enforcement of the rules and regulations across the cemetery, section by section. Thank you Chair. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Firstly, I had councillor McEwan.
Thank you Chair. Firstly, I would like to start by thanking officers for this report, which I think has handled the subject sensitively. This has been a long journey for the council, as the conversation started back in 2020. This process culminated in a consultation process, which is obviously highlighted in the report. The consultation was well received and feedback has been positive. The change to allowing mounded, traditional and lawn graves within Westfield is a real step forward to provide an inclusive service for our residents. Opening hours reflect the demand for the services we have and give us flexibility in increasing the types of services offered. And going forward, we will communicate and apply the new regulations sensitively and also consistently. So thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McEwan. Councillor White?
Thank you Chair. I had some concerned residents contact me on this sensitive issue a while ago. So good to see that it is moving forward in a positive fashion. These concerns from the Muslim community are reflected in the consultation, which is given as one of the appendices, I think, with only 47% of Muslim respondents saying that the initial proposals meet requirements, that's less than half. But Green councillors, welcome that on this occasion, the council has listened to the many responses on burials and cremations. It's good that there is now an out-of-hours service on sunburnt bank holidays. It's good that the councillors listened on grave types and where they can be located. So Green councillors will be supporting this. And as it says in the report, this needs to be reviewed and updated as necessary.
Councillor Stanford Beale?
Thank you Chair. We very much welcome the report and that there has been very good consultation with the community. Shortage of burial land is an issue nationally, not just in Reading. And I'm sure in historic times councillor Rollins previously gave us quite an interesting talk about the growth of cemeteries and the different types that we have in Reading. Of course, in London, because there was a shortage of burial ground, that's why the large cemetery at Brookwood was built. And people used to take the train down. And indeed, if you're an employee of British Rail, you used to be able to get your coffin transported for free after your death, which was an interesting benefit. So it is really good to see that we've got a different variety of graves available for people, and we've got the long opening hours. And of course, we've also got the new building that's on the, that we've brought into service now in the cemetery, so that there is better facilities there for staff and for visitors and residents, as it were. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Stanford Beale. Anybody else? No? We're not detecting any dissent. I mean, I should say, Ms Wiltshire, anything you wanted to come back on?
No, nothing at all. Thank you Chair.
Wonderful. Then let's take the recommended action. And I assume everybody's okay with agreeing this. Wonderful. Thank you all. Moving us on to item seven, burial land options and considerations. So councillor Stafford Beale can give the same speech again, I guess. We have Isabelle Edgar-Brierson, the Assistant Director here to present.
Thank you Chair. And thank you everyone. So back in June 2021, we agreed that we would bring forward a report outlining some of the options available for burials post the using up what the current capacity that we currently have in Henley Cemetery. So I've done a light touch report at this stage, and the aim of the paper really is to set out our current and future options for burials for Reading residents, and the potential options for the council to consider for future burial provision. So appendix one sets out the options for our customers for burial outside of Reading. And it's genuinely a mixed picture in terms of provision. Neighbouring councils do, such as Wokingham and Bracknell, do have between 18 and 40 years worth of burial provision. But the majority of cemeteries outside of our area are generally two to four times more expensive for Reading residents to use. The only exception to that really is around natural burials, which tend to be commercial sites, and therefore they set their own charges generally. However, the grave types available in natural burial sites are very limited. Just that light touch review led me to conclude really that relying on burials outside of the Reading Borough was not a sustainable service for our customers, particularly due to the costs and the distances. And that may simply be prohibitive for many Reading residents. And it does not provide the additional capacity across the region, and therefore there are less options for faith burials particularly. So I just wanted, in the report, I've set out some of the context in which this discussion is being held. And it's already been mentioned that there is a real scarcity of burial land in the South East, around 15 years. There is not legislation in place at the moment, with the exception of London, around that warrant the reuse of graves. And as you can imagine, this is a very sensitive and unpopular option. Clearly, we have a real scarcity of land within the Borough. And the extension of Henley Cemetery, as it currently is, is pretty constrained. So securing land in Reading itself, obviously it carries a premium to it, and therefore is not likely to be value for money. And what we've found from our initial studies is that the larger the landholding that we can get hold of for burial space, so decades of burial space, all the capex and opex costs will obviously be significantly reduced. I'm keen to explore options that keep costs and distances manageable for our customers. And actually, there is opportunity to diversify our offer, should we look further afield. So the recommendations within the report kind of set out to achieve some of those aims. And so in summary, I'm recommending that we do some further work to really get the detail about what options are genuinely open to us at this stage. So my recommendations are to take forward option three, which is exploring land options within the Borough. Option four, which is exploring land acquisition within around 10 miles of the Borough. Option six, which is around new land acquisition with a neighbouring authority. And option seven, which is extension of Henley Cemetery, specifically looking at the Cavasham Park area. I've noted in the report that we also have further land, the allotment land that's also attached to the cemetery. But at this stage, I'm not recommending taking that forward for further exploration. And so thank you.
Thank you Assistant Director. If you could just pop your microphone off for us. Councillor McEwan?
Thank you Chair. Again, I would like to thank officers for this report. This report highlights the difficulty in finding suitable burial land within the Borough, and also highlights that cemetery land is indeed incredibly scarce within the South East. However, we know from the previously mentioned consultation that there is significant demand for faith and cultural burials within the Borough. As this report highlights, the first stage is simply to keep our options open and commission further work to see what we can do in terms of extending our service beyond the life of the current cemetery. And again, we are of course committed to delivering burials within the Borough.
Thank you councillor McEwan. And just to add to that, I think, you know, given how difficult this is as an issue in terms of, well, in terms of resolving the issue, it's good that we're starting this work so early. But even so, I think it's going to be a long and tricky road to find a solution here. Anybody else? No? Councillor Stanford Beale?
Thank you. So this cemetery just happened to be in my ward, so I know the area reasonably well, shall we say. For those of you that aren't aware, the land at Cavasham Park sort of backs onto the cemetery, so it would be a natural extension. And of course, the Cavasham Park was the BBC monitoring centre. It was bought in the 1940s from the Oratory School. It's a very large area. It's parkland. Some of it was set out by Capability Brown. It's got trees that are over 300 years old. And it would be, you know, a very good match as a setting for a cemetery. Obviously, it has been sold by the BBC, is my understanding. So it will be down to whether or not the new land owner wishes to sell or allow us to lease some of the land for use as burial sites. But I would certainly recommend that we enter those negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stanford Beale. No other indications. So I assume everybody's okay with the recommended actions as outlined here. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Moving us on then to item eight, the award of contract accommodation with support for young people at YMCA Reading. And I have Bryony Hall to present, I hope, because she's popped up on the magic box.
Yes, thank you Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Lovely. Thank you. So this report details the recommendation to award a support contract to the YMCA for the provision of accommodation services to young people in Reading. Reading Borough Council currently commissions the YMCA to deliver a contract of the value of £318,000 to provide 40 units of supported accommodation to young people aged 16 to 25. The current contract expires on the 30th of September. The opportunity was taken to carry out a review of both the needs of young people and the service, and it determined that there was still a clear need for this type of supported provision. And the most cost-effective way to deliver this, while still delivering positive outcomes for young people, was in the type of supported, this type of supported environment. Due to the lack of alternative suitable properties, we undertook direct negotiations with the YMCA to agree with service which delivers quality and value for money. The intention is for this contract to be jointly managed by Brighter Futures for Children and RBC, to ensure the best outcomes for Reading's young people by streamlining monitoring and taking a more holistic approach to the offer for young people. As a result, the negotiations for the new contract offer 70k savings to the cost of £248,000 to RBC. In summary, this report seeks the approval for the proposal to award a three-year contract to the YMCA at a value of £270,000, which includes a £22,000 contribution for Brighter Futures for Children, agreed at their executive committee earlier in the year. I draw your attention to the recommendations in section two of the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you kindly. Councillor Emberson?
Thank you Chair. And I just want to start by thanking officers, because a lot of work has gone into making this possible, to bring this recommendation tonight, you know, in terms of joint work. And you've had housing colleagues and Brighter Future colleagues, as well as the YMCA. And I think it made sense to go into direct negotiations, as outlined within the report and as mentioned in opening statements. Obviously, the YMCA are very well established in Reading and very well known for supporting a lot of young people across Reading who are vulnerable and struggling. And they offer that 24/7 care for a wide range of Reading residents that are struggling. I think the report is very comprehensive and sets out the position in terms of what young people in Reading need and what this contract will offer them. And it offers real support in terms of the needs that they have and providing those really meaningful outcomes. I know councillor Terry has been briefed separately in terms of the brighter futures element and the piece of work that they do with the YMCA as well. And indeed, within the report, it mentions the positive feedback through surveys carried out in terms of the work the YMCA does. So I'd just really like to thank officers and support the recommended action.
Thank you. Councillor Terry?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add to councillor Emberson's introductory remarks. Just to say that, I'm satisfied that Brighter Futures for Children and Housing Service have been working really well together to make sure that we have the right provision in the right place at the right time for our children and young people. And this is a very important element of that. The market's very difficult for that elsewhere, and we often have to place our children and young people further away than we'd like. So this is a really important element of provision that is local and available to our children and young people who need that 24/7 support. Thank you.
Councillor White?
Thank you Chair. When I first saw this report, I was concerned about the impact that cutting £70,000 from the contract with the YMCA, which houses young people who are struggling. Disappointingly, the report didn't make clear how this cut was being made and what we were losing or what was changing. However, the briefing had was very informative. At the briefing, it was made clear to me that this saving has been delivered by increasing the rent, however, the rent paid by young people, however, the rent is being paid by housing benefit, I was assured. So there will be no impact negatively on young people living in this valuable accommodation. If the lead councillors can confirm that as far as they're aware, they don't foresee any negative impact on the young people living here, then Green councillors are happy to support this.
When you say the report was unclear, do you really mean that you didn't understand the report? Is that what we're really getting at here councillor White?
No. What I meant was, I don't think that that was in the report, that there was going to be a rent increase. Although I did skim it fairly quickly, and I'd hold my hands up to possibly missing it. But when I asked the officer, she said to me that it wasn't in the report. So yeah, I don't know. I could be wrong. It's happened before, once or twice.
Never good to admit to skimming a report if you're then going to try and make some big statements about an important issue like children and the care like children and the care of children in our borough. Councillor Emberson?
Thank you, Chair, and I just, you know, those you know, I just find it embarrassing when you try and make political points on things. And I'm glad you had the full briefing from officers and that you do feel reassured, as we do. And, you know, a paper wouldn't track to a committee with a recommendation if officers weren't fully satisfied that it wasn't meeting the young needs of our people in Reading. And of course, in terms of the cut to the contract, you know, this was agreed in February and that debate took place there. And officers, you know, caveated that saving as part of the contract in terms of, you know, making sure that what we provide is what our young people need, and that is what this report does. So I'm fully satisfied from officers that what is proposed tonight in terms of the contract, you know, will not impact negatively on young people, and indeed, the same provision is provided for. And I, you know, I am uncomfortable that councillor White has, you know, acknowledged that he skims his papers. You know, and on this side, we read them fully. And whilst the rent increase is not noted in the papers, because, you know, I have read them all, so I know it's not noted in there. I know that that briefing was given to you and offered in full transparency in terms of, you know, how the contract is made up. So I'm pleased that councillor White is assured by officers. But I just find it difficult, as the Chair has already expressed, in terms of making political points about the provision for our young people.
Thank you. No other indications, so I assume then we're all okay with the recommended actions to approve it? Good? Wonderful, thank you very much. Takes us on to Item Nine, all 200 pages of it. And do I have Mark Waringham to present? You have been through all 200 pages, Mr Waringham, I'm sure. Over to you.
I wrote them, yeah. Okay, thank you. One of the biggest concerns that this council has expressed about the planning system over recent years is the operation of permitted development rights and the way that they've been increasingly used by government over the last 10 years to create shortcuts for more major forms of development, in particular developments that deliver new homes. These concerns have been expressed repeatedly in responses to government consultations and also through the recent parliamentary inquiry on this matter. Our biggest concerns about this include the poor quality of new homes, including the lack of amenity space, the lack of family housing, exposure of residents to noise and poor air quality, the loss of employment floor space and impact on neighbouring businesses, impacts on our high streets and the lack of contribution to affordable housing and local infrastructure. This report therefore recommends making an Article Four direction, which is a legal tool that removes specified permitted development rights within a defined area. The recommended direction would remove permitted development rights for conversion of a number of commercial uses to residential, for new residential stories on top of commercial buildings and for redevelopment of existing commercial buildings and blocks of flats for new homes. It would cover the entire town centre, all of our district and local centres, our most important employment areas, other primarily commercial areas and the areas of poorest air quality. The draft direction, including the full maps, is all set out in Appendix Two of the report. The government sets a high bar for justifying such Article Four directions, and the onus is on us to demonstrate that it's necessary and covers the smallest possible geographical area. For changes of use to residential, we have to demonstrate there would be wholly unacceptable adverse impacts. In our view, the evidence document, which is included in Appendix Three of the report, demonstrates quite clearly that these impacts already occur and will continue to do so without action. A written ministerial statement by the now former Secretary of State makes clear that he will consider using his powers to cancel or modify directions where necessary if they don't pass those tests. So it's important to note that the proposed direction will not prevent appropriate forms of development coming forward that would change commercial to residential, as they did for many years before permitted development rights were introduced. It will simply ensure that developments will be subject to the same processes and scrutiny as any other type of development that would result in new homes. The proposal is that the direction would be non-immediate, so it would come into force at least 12 months after the notices are served to avoid the risk of needing to pay compensation to landowners. And the process will be that, once notices are served, there will follow a period of consultation, and the council will then need to decide whether to confirm the direction, taking the results of consultation into account. This is therefore expected to come back to policy committee during the winter for consideration of whether to confirm. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Waringham. Councillor Page?
Chair, can I firstly thank Mark for the enormous amount of work that has gone into an extremely detailed report? It needs to come in its totality and in this level of detail for the reason that he mentioned, that the Secretary of, or the previous Secretary of State made very clear that he wasn't willing just to nod through Article Four applications, notwithstanding the fact that across local government, of all parties, Labour, Conservative, Lib Dem, Green and independents are united in their view that the permitted development rights changes that have been made are detrimental, and they're even more detrimental. They were detrimental enough before the pandemic, but subsequent to the pandemic and with the impact that that's had on our high streets, these permitted development right changes are potentially catastrophic and will render us unable to assist the planned recovery of our high streets. And the LGA nationally is lobbying across with all party support. And hopefully, and I only underline hopefully, the new Secretary of State might be a bit more open to the representations that are being made. Because remember, originally, the changes that were introduced by Eric Pickles were only temporary for the period of that Parliament up till 2015. And then they were made permanent, much to the horror of everybody in local government. And the cost has been real. And this report is not the report to emphasise that, but it is referenced briefly under the financial summary on page 126. One element, nearly, well, one and three-quarter million pounds of lost fee income, just the fees applicants pay to this authority. And the comparison in the table is shown. Can you imagine what that money would have enabled us to have done on the planning front and particularly the enforcement role of this authority? And then there is all the loss of affordable housing contributions, both on-site and in cash. Nearly 600 new affordable homes lost to this town as a result of permitted development and at least three and a half million in off-site contributions. On top of that, about four million in education, leisure and transport contributions. So this is not some arcane matter. These are permitted development rights that not only undermine our planning role but have had a serious impact on our coffers and our ability to help the most vulnerable in terms of affordable housing and our general environment in investment in education, leisure and transport. So the introduction of an Article Four direction, applied to the areas that we're talking about, doesn't prevent development. And I know that this is a difficult concept for people who aren't familiar with the planning process, but we're not blocking changes of use. All that we are saying is that in all these areas identified, we, the local planning authority, want to see a proper planning process applied to those applications so that local residents get the opportunity to be consulted as they should be. And we, as a local authority, can assess against all our policies the applications that are being made and require appropriate contributions for infrastructure, leisure, education and all the rest of it. It's not at all unreasonable. And I would hope, therefore, there would be unanimity of support for this well-researched application to be submitted to the department as soon as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. I had first councillor Davine.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, again, thanks to Mark Waringham for pulling together this report, which I didn't actually manage to weigh through from top to bottom, but I had a briefing that made it just a bit more bearable. I'm not sure how this will be received by any new minister of housing and local government, given that the last ministerial statement ruled out removal of PDRs, the permitted development rights, for whole town centres on block. And so I fully expect to see something of a rejection of this. And I'm quite certain that we are going to need to prepare a Plan B and see what we can do. At the moment, we're asking for everything, I think, including the whole town centre and all the various hubs, the various commercial centres around the town. I seriously think, and I certainly agree with councillor Page, that the loss of S Section 106 contributions is a sad development. And we are indeed missing out on all sorts of things, in not least of which is hundreds of affordable homes. However, whatever is finally accepted regarding an Article Four direction, and the fact that it requires 12 months to implement means it will give all the remaining office block landowners plenty of time to file planning applications to turn their remaining offices into flats. And if you look around the town centre, there is an awful lot of the gone already that we can do nothing about. And I wonder actually how many office blocks are left to convert. But we are unlikely to save many office blocks from conversion with this Article Four direction, even if it does go through. And all I can say is we're going to lose even more in Section 106 contributions looking to do at least the next year or two. Nevertheless, I certainly support the effort that's gone into preparing this report and I support the recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Davine. I think we would all expect the Department for Leveling Up Housing in Communities, whatever it's now called, will push back on at least elements of this and perhaps the whole thing. But I think it will be incumbent upon them and the new Secretary of State to justify why they think it's okay to keep permitted development and the creation of slums of the future. And indeed, we cannot allow an intolerable situation to continue without any form of protest or considered representation that allows our town to be shaped and reshaped without any democratic input in ways that deliver suboptimal accommodation, to put it nicely, and in some cases, truly awful accommodation that is barely fit for human habitation. And all the while, denying developers all of their usual obligations in terms of Section 106 and community infrastructure levy and importantly, affordable housing. So I think this is entirely the right thing to do, and I'm glad that you support it, even if it seemed a little bit reluctant. Councillor McElroy?
Thanks, Chair. Greens' reaction to this is that it's a fair response to what the government is trying to do here, so we're in support. Definitely thank you to the officers for the work that they put into this, the obvious work and the report. This did get the synapses firing, and I did ask for a briefing from the officer about removing the permitted development right that allows conversions of homes into HMO. And the officer rightly pointed out that shoehorning that into this work, which covers mostly commercial areas, would not be appropriate. It would need its own discussion and evidence base. So I guess the only note I wanted to make while we're talking about this is a, you know, a possible thing here. It would be great to see some sort of work along these lines to look at how how HMOs are permitted through this. Because obviously, HMOs are a persistent and serious issue within these areas, especially in a lot of the neighbourhoods pushing up against the university. And perhaps there are chances for us to look at that in this light as well. That's all. Cheers.
Thank you, councillor McElroy. There is work going on around the council in terms of HMOs. I'm sure councillor Page will touch on it later if he comes back. But it's also pertinent to say, I suppose, that not all HMOs require a change of use class and so not even covered under PD, but it is, you know, it's a significant issue, I accept. Councillor Stanford Beale?
Thank you very much, councillor Brock. Again, I'd like to thank Mark Waringham for the fantastic work he's done on this. When I was preparing for it and going through every map, my husband was saying, why are there so many maps? And I said, because we've got so many parts of Reading that we want to protect. The, you know, the issue that we have here, we have spoken about, I think, every planning meeting. We've had a standing item on the agenda and we've looked at the permitted development rights. And councillor Page always speaks and reminds us that it was the Tory government that brought this in. So the key element is, say, that we have got some very poor conversions of commercial buildings into residential. And actually, my husband knows this one very well, because when he was a university student, his Hall of Residence had previously been a warehouse, and there was a gap like that in the end of the partition walls. And you could sit there and you could look all the way down the corridor at this little gap. So obviously, there wasn't much there wasn't much protection of noise, shall we say, in the Hall of Residence, which for a Hall of Residence is one thing, but you certainly wouldn't want to live in a flat like that, would you? And I think the pandemic last year, when everybody was working from home and staying at home in the hot weather, when people were in flats in London where it could reach, you know, 38 degrees late at night because there wasn't sufficient ventilation in those flats, because there were converted office blocks, brought it home to a lot of people. And certainly, we had one planning application last month, sorry, this month, where we turned it down because we were very concerned about the ventilation, the natural daylight in that particular development. And that was, again, a commercial building that people wanted, that the developer wanted to change over to residential. It is a key issue, and the Conservative group will be supporting this tonight. Thank you very much, Mr Waringham.
Thank you, councillor Stanford Beale. It's interesting, sometimes the Tory government will bring a thing in temporarily and can make it permanent. And sometimes they'll bring a thing in temporarily and say they couldn't possibly make it permanent. It just seems to, it seems to matter whether it affects, you know, vulnerable people or rich developers, but there we are. Councillor Page, I think you wanted to come back.
I can get as partisan as you, Chair. For fear of for fear of jeopardising the cross-party support, which I'm genuinely grateful for. I would just make the point to councillor Stanford Beale, but more for councillor Davine's benefit. I know his memory, like mine, is getting poor with old age, but it was the coalition government that introduced this permitted development, and your parties is guilty as hers. But let's share the blame in a, yeah. But more serious point, Chair, about the 12-month that we could go for an immediate Article Four, but that brings with it financial risks that are spelled out in the report. And most authorities go with the approach of the 12-month notice period. I think most of the developers that were intending to do it have already done it. There are still some in the pipeline. But between you, me and the world's media, councillor Davine, the fact is that many of the applications are brought forward, not so much with a view to implementation. This is in Reading I'm talking about, but to bolster the book value of some of those offices. That doesn't mean they couldn't be implemented with the substandard provisions that councillor Brock has rightly referred to. But we are hoping, and indeed, a number of developers are already bringing forward full planning applications, recognising that what they have secured via permitted development is not of a quality that's likely to attract real interest in the Reading market. But nonetheless, the case for taking this forward is compelling and overwhelming. And I would underline the point that you, Chair, have just made, that this being the well-researched and evidence submission, I think the department will find it hard to reject it. There may be some pushback. I should be very interested to know on what basis, because this is not, if this were just a blanket Article Four across the whole borough, I could understand the pushback. But this has dissected the borough, come at it in a number of different ways, and that is set out in great detail here. And on that basis, I would hope that the department would give it the similar treatment that we have done in researching it in the first place. So, Chair, I'm grateful for the, just on the Article Four regarding HMOs, we have already done- We have already done some and it is, it is a very difficult area. This is, I know councillor McElroy appreciates, but it is something we are actively looking at. Again, an Article Four across the whole borough is not likely to get much traction nationally. And we are in discussions about that. So we will return to that, but at the moment, I'm grateful for the cross-party support for this, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor Stamford Beale, can you just pop your microphone off? Mr Waringham, anything you wanted to come back on at all there?
No, thank you, Chair.
Wonderful then. I assume from the general conversation, everybody's okay with the recommended actions, yes? Agreed? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Taking us on to item 10, the fleet replacement programme. And do I have, I've got James Crosby. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. This report requests scheme and spend approval to deliver the vehicle replacement programme from 21 to 2024. And the programme takes into consideration the government's paper Road to Zero, which sets out the policy approach towards transitioning to zero emission road transport and a reduction in emissions from conventional vehicles. The policy also sets out the transport energy model, which assesses the energy consumption, air quality, pollutant emissions and greenhouse gas emissions of a range of road transport fuels and technologies over a period to 2015. Officers will use this information to help inform decisions on the seven-year indicative replacement cycle alongside other assessment data such as efficiency, needs of the service and mileage. The programme aims to set out a forward plan with estimated costings. And in addition to the financial planning benefits, it also helps with re-tendering and the maintenance contracts between because the contracts have a view of what they would be responsible for when they take on a new contract. It shows the journey towards greening the fleet. And multi-year contracting of vehicle acquisitions will help to reduce administration and lead times of the procurement and generates fleet standardisation. Grouping of similar vehicles on contracts can result in savings in the procurement of vehicles, vehicle parts, repairer contracts and training of operators. Currently, leading times are currently up to a year. So being able to place orders well in advance is essential. Officers have worked with the Energy Savings Trust, looking at the best route towards our carbon reduction targets. And their findings have been factored into the programme. Programme tries to eliminate revenue risks by reducing short-term hires and increased maintenance costs caused by an ageing or not fit-for-purpose fleet. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Assistant Director. Councillor Page.
Thank you. Not much to add. I would make the important point that is made in 4.2. And James Crosby's just picked up on this, that the work that we've done in-house has also been assisted by the advice from the Energy Savings Trust. So we have drawn on their expertise in bringing forward the programme and of course, the industry as well is relatively new. And therefore, balancing what is available on the market along with our own needs is a challenge. But I believe that we have got here a good programme. And thank the officers for that. I think councillor Barnett Ward wants to also make some comments, which I won't therefore trespass on. Thank you.
Quite right and proper too. Councillor Barnett Ward.
Thank you, Chair. I want to welcome this, thank officers for it. And also draw the committee's attention to paragraph 4.10, which notes that the programme doesn't assume like-for-like replacement. And the officers will be looking at where the transport can be achieved in a different way. So we're looking at active travel, we're looking at public transport, we're looking at cargo bikes and so on. It's not automatically swapping out a petrol vehicle for an electric vehicle when there's another way of achieving that. And I really welcome that because just swapping fossil fuel vehicles for the same number of electric vehicles is not going to be enough globally to tackle the climate emergency. So it's fantastic that Reading's leading on that. And also the paragraphs following on from that that set out what will happen where our ambition is greater than the currently available technology, which, because we are being so ambitious, will sometimes be the case. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Barnett Ward. Councillor McElroy.
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, thanks to the officers for this work. Really glad to see the progress that's being made and the direction of the progress. So just a quick note to say we'll support it and thumbs up.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford Beale.
Thank you very much. We have a long history, particularly with our bus company, that we own of going for new technology. And I'm sure that with this project as well, we will be looking at getting the best we can from new technology to support our ambitions around reducing our climate emissions to achieve our aim. Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of the points councillor Barnett Ward made very well is, of course, you know, we always, we talk a lot about new technology and so on. But sometimes it's just old technology that we need to use. And one shouldn't assume that technology will solve all of the problems of the climate crisis, right? Anyway, no other indications, so assume everybody's okay with the recommended actions. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr Crosby. Taking us on then to item 11, proposed changes to the local council tax reduction scheme. Sam Wells, over to you.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. This report sets out a range of options to consider amendments to our current local council tax reduction scheme for the upcoming financial year. There are five proposals which both reduce administration processes for customers and staff and provide an increased level of support. Each year, there's a requirement for local authority to review the scheme. And if amendments are proposed, there must be a consultation process and response is duly considered before applying changes. I think it's helpful to provide you with the background of our current position in relation to the national picture to give you some context to suggested amendments. Council tax benefit, the national system for support for council tax bills was localised and replaced by what is now known as the local council tax reduction scheme in April 2013. Councils were left to devise their own schemes for working age residents, but full protection for pensioners provided by council tax benefit remain a requirement of each local scheme. There are now only 44 out of 309 local authorities who have neither introduced for minimum payment. So this means the proportion of council tax liability that all working age residents are required to pay, regardless of their income. A banned cap, which involves limiting the amount of support for those in higher banded properties. So it does not exceed the amount provided to those in lower value properties. Or the introduction of income banned schemes. So schemes which assess the income of claimants and depending on the income band a claimant falls in pay a certain proportion of their council tax bill. Reading has both a minimum payment and a banned cap. Although the number of schemes with no minimum payment has increased recently, the most common minimum payment group means 20 to 29%. There are only 22 councils with a minimum payment of 30% or more, demonstrating a great deal of variation across England. Reading's scheme currently has a minimum payment of 35%, placing us in that top 22. As it stands, current support levels increase the overall council tax collectible. However, the revenue generator can place customers in hardship and increase resource required to recover the debt. There are five proposed changes for the financial year 2223, all of which look to provide greater levels of support for our residents and at ease administrative burdens. Proposal one seeks to increase support. So we propose reducing the minimum payment to between 25 and 30% of their council tax liability, a reduction from the current minimum payment of 35%. The range indicated allows for consideration of caseload changes between now and tax base setting in January 22. Based on financial modelling of the current caseload, the lower minimum payment of 25% may be unachievable. However, we have seen caseload reductions in the past month with numbers moving towards pre-COVID case figures. By consulting on a range of support levels, caseload changes by the time of tax base setting can then determine the maximum support potential. Proposal two seeks to remove the working age council tax support minimum of £5 a month or less. Currently, if an applicant is eligible for less than £5 per month support, their claim is cancelled. Removing minimum support levels would avoid claims ending, thus reduce the number of re-applications and ensures customers receive the support they're entitled to, no matter how small. Whilst this change would have minimal impact on the value of support, it does however aid administration, both for the customers and processing staff by removing the need for a full re-application each time circumstances change fluctuating above and below minimum support levels. The third proposal seeks to amend the capital limits. There is currently an upper capital limit of £3,000, which means that people with £3,000 or more do not qualify for support for the remainder of the billing year, irrespective of whether that capital is subsequently spent. We propose to increase the upper capital limit from 3,000 to 6,000, which means that people with 6,000 or more would not qualify for reduction. We also propose the removal of the restriction to submit a new claim during the remainder of the billing year, where capital is subsequently spent. However, consider whether an applicant had purposely deprived themselves of capital for the purposes of scheme eligibility. In addition to increasing the number of eligible applicants, the change will reduce administration. Access to current Department of Works and pensions data only provides capital data where it exceeds 6,000, in line with the Housing Benefit and Universal Credit regulations. This change would therefore reduce the need to request further evidence approved for capital, as data would be accessible. The fourth proposal seeks to introduce a backdating provision. There are currently no provisions to backdate a claim prior to the date of receipt. We propose to allow a maximum one-month backdating provision within the scheme. A working age claimant must have good cause for their late claim throughout the period for which the backdating is requested. This change will also align with the current housing benefit and the universal credit regulations. The fifth proposal seeks amendments to the non-dependent deductions. Deductions can be made from an applicant's support for any person aged over 18 who normally lived with them or for whom they do not receive child benefit, subject to certain exclusions. Non-dependents are typically grown-up children or elderly relatives. There are currently two rates of non-dependent deduction of £10 and £15 per week, depending on the number of hours in remuniated work and salary paid. We propose to set a standard rate of £10 per week for non-dependent deductions to apply regardless of whether engaged in remunerative work. The proposed change would reduce administration for both staff and customers and provide increased support for those currently with a higher non-dependent deduction. It removes the need to request evidence for non-dependent, for non-dependence income. A standard deduction could be applied in all circumstances, thus speeding up claim processing times. Budgetary requirements carry out consultation on any changes to the local council tax deduction scheme. Although government's code of practice on consultation states that whilst normally 12 weeks is appropriate, billing authorities can consider the appropriate length of their consultation, depending on the impact of their proposals and the ability to complete the consultation exercise within budgetary timetables. It's proposed that we carry out consultation over an eight-week period from 27th of September to 21st of November to allow for consideration of feedback and revised modelling ahead of the council tax base setting. £650,000 is earmarked in the medium-term financial strategy to provide additional support to council tax support claimants in 2223. Expenditure has been modelled on current caseload and assumes a total increase of either 1.99% on all council tax bills or 2.99%. Currently stands the funding required based on a 1.99% increase in order for all five proposals with a minimum payment contribution of 253,000. With a 2.99% increase, the requirement would be 860,000. Of this, Reading will be responsible for 731,000 or 737,000 respectively, and the remainder split between the two preceptors. The funding required to support the five proposals with a minimum contribution of 30% would be 496,000 per annum for a 1.99% increase or 500,000 for a 2.99% increase, with Reading responsible for either 425,000 or 428,000, depending on the overall tax increase. So subject to your approval of undertaking consultation on these five proposals, further molly would be undertaken upon closure of the consultation window, enabling caseload variances to be factored in and feedback from the consultation with the final scheme proposals tracking through to policy later in the year. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. I think, you know, fair to say this is an issue that matters a great deal to me personally. I know it matters a great deal to all of my Labour colleagues as well. And it's been a source of great frustration to all of us that the consequences of government reductions to council budgets have prevented us till now being able to bring forward proposals for an enhanced local council tax reduction scheme. In the current financial year, of course, we've offered universally to all recipients of CTRS a flat rate grant, which I'm sure is a welcome support. But clearly, moving forward, we want to look at how the scheme can be reformed to make it best meet its intended purposes and best benefit those who need that support. So it's really pleasing that we've got this consultation before us. And I think we can all see, can't we? I mean, look around, look at the news with rising gas prices, rising electricity bills, with cuts to universal credit, that some of those who are on the very lowest incomes here in Reading do need support. And I'm pleased that as a council, we having made prudent allocation in our MTFS, able to propose this tonight, take it to consultation and bring it forward as we enter the new year to be implemented in the budget for the next financial year. Councillor White.
Thank you, Chair. Green councillors are happy to vote for these measures in the report to support people on low incomes with paying their council tax. As anyone that's tried to read the report will know, and I obviously read it very thoroughly, there is a lot of technical information in there. I found the table on page two comparing the minimum payments particularly useful. It shows Reading has the highest minimum annual payment for a couple in the example given at £727, which is for a band D property. The measures in this report will reduce the amount of council tax people on low incomes pay, which is great. However, working through the example, if the recommendations in this report are voted through, the minimum payment reduces by £100 or £200, depending on which end of the range we end up at. So it will reduce down from 727 down to either 623 or 519. So it's saving either £100 or £200 for that couple annually. However, it's still quite a lot of money for someone on a low income to find. And I'm sure everyone agrees the council needs to keep doing all that it can to see what else that can be done to support people with paying their council tax bills. And it would be lovely if the government saw sense and would fund councils properly to do this. So green councillors will support tackling poverty. We support a more equal town and we will support these measures to help people on low incomes pay their council tax.
Thank you, councillor White. You'll be aware, of course, but it's worth saying, I think that the band D comparator is not as useful in Reading's case as it might be elsewhere, precisely because the vast, vast majority of our properties are band C and below. The vast majority are band C and B. In fact, you are unlikely to live in a band D property here in Reading and very unlikely to live in some of the properties higher than that, of course. But this Labour administration will always continue to do all it can to help people on low incomes across the town. And we always welcome, of course, constructive dialogue around that. No other indications, so I move to the vote. I assume then that everybody is okay with the recommendations. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Moving us on to item 12, the accessible information and communications policy. Do I have Claire Muir? Yes, over to you.
Thank you. This report presents the draft accessible information and communications policy developed to support the customer experience strategy that the council has. The customer experience strategy recognises that some people might need extra support to access services and that we must ensure that it's available. So this draft policy sets out a consistent approach to the way we will communicate and provide information, particularly considering the needs of people who are disabled, people who do not speak English or read English very well, people with low literacy and people who don't have access to IT. It adopts best practice that's set out in the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines and seeks to work to full compliance of the NHS Accessible Information Standard, which is currently applying to personal services in adult social care. And this would, this policy would extend it across all services of the council. The policy is provided in Appendix One of the report and a high-level implementation plan is set out in Appendix Three. Rolling out the best practice of the NHS Accessible Information Standard across all services will need to take place in stages. An audit and review of compliance with the standard is currently underway in adult social care and will be completed by December. This will provide learning for an approach across the whole council for the adoption of the standard. And improvements to accessibility of the website will be incorporated into the customer experience programme work on the website going forward. So the the draft policy is put for your approval today.
Thank you. Councillor McEwan.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this report and thank officers for the work involved.
I welcome this report and thank officers for the work involved. As mentioned, this policy flows on from commitments made in the customer experience strategy to ensure that all of our residents have access to information. We recognise that there will always be a diverse range of residents within the borough and that it needs additional support to access services in a way that meets their needs. Officers have worked closely with key voluntary sector organisations to inform and shape the policy, and this collaborative work will continue. And finally, this policy will develop in response to need, and as an organisation, we will continue to learn and move towards making this a reality, encouraging more inclusivity within our communities.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the officers for producing this well-written report. We've seen in previous meetings, obviously, the striving for improving customer experience, and that is great, moving more online, automating processes and providing higher accessibility through that means. But we've always mentioned that there are some that are not IT savvy or don't have access to the internet easily, and also the disabled. So it's great to see that, you know, this policy is being put forward to cater for those and to certainly encourage the council to, you know, move in that sort of way in terms of full inclusivity to all our residents in Reading. So we certainly will be backing this, the recommended action to approve this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Robinson. No other indications, so I assume then we're all okay with it. Oh, no, no, I lie, I lie. I mean, I'd even nodded at you. councillor Barnett Ward.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make it quick since we were nearly at the end of this and everyone's looking at the time. I just wanted to say that I, in my day job, am CEO of Reading Association for the Blind, and so know very well how people with accessibility difficulties have been left behind by some services, thankfully not the councillors, as I know for our people, during the pandemic. The switch to online has really affected some of the most vulnerable groups in our society, so I really welcome that this is being brought forward, it's very timely. But I also wanted to welcome and note the work of officers to contact appropriate voluntary sector organisations within the borough and work in partnership with people who really know the issues that are being dealt with by people with different accessibility difficulties. That's enhanced this proposal, and I'm really pleased that we're doing that sort of partnership working. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnett Ward. Right, taking us then to the recommended action, are we all okay with agreeing that? Wonderful. Moves us on to item 13, the Q1 performance and monitoring report. Do I have Stuart Donnelly? Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
There he is. Over to you.
So, this report sets out the projected revenue and capital, financial outturn positions for the financial year for both the general fund and housing revenue account as of the end of June 2021. As this is only three months into the year, it's very early forecast and clearly subject to fluctuations, particularly given the current levels of ongoing uncertainty, for example, arising from COVID-19 pandemic, as well as any financial implications that may arise from any unforeseen events that may arise in the remaining nine months of the year. The forecast general fund revenue position is a £3.419 million overspend. The main variances are a £3.691 million overspend within adult care and health services. This is due to transformative work containing further cost pressures rather than delivering cashable reductions within the placement budgets. There's also a £3.164 million projected overspend within economic growth and neighbourhood services, this primarily arising within transportation and planning services due to income shortfalls due to the ongoing impacts of COVID-19. These pressures are partially offset by the corporate contingency budget of £3.844 million. The forecast delivery and non-delivery of budget savings are set out in the report, and these are included within the financial outturn forecasts. Work continues to identify what mitigating actions can be taken to facilitate savings delivery in year. The report also sets out and explains the forecast underspends on the housing revenue account and the general fund and HRA capital programmes. There is one budget environment that requires approval from policy committee due to its size. This is simply transferring budget from one code to another within civil engineering. So it's not transferring any money between services, but due to the financial regulations stating that budgets over £500,000 must come to policy committee, this report is recommending that that environment is approved. July's policy committee, as part of the 2021 outturn report, there was an approved £3.968 million transfer to earmarked reserves in respect of unwritten fenced and unspent COVID-19 support funding. This was to be set aside in earmarked reserve to meet the ongoing financial impacts of the pandemic. Policy committees asked to consider the bids that we have received from demand-led services as set out in section six and appendices three and four to redress financial and non-financial pressures arising from or exacerbated by COVID-19. The report also includes an update on performance against the measures of success in the council's corporate plan. It should be noted that many of these measures are new, and particularly for those that are quarterly, there is no prior comparator for which to calculate the direction of travel against. So that is the reason for why there are a number of blank entries in Appendix 2. This will be updated and expanded in future reports through quarter two and quarter three, which will come back to policy committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Donnelly, very comprehensive, and I am enamoured of your telescope. councillor McEwan.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I would like to thank officers for this report. The report highlights the financial position for the first quarter of the year. It is obviously very early in the financial year, however, there is, as the report highlights, there is a lot of uncertainty regarding COVID and its financial implications. Officers are currently reviewing savings and assessing if any can be brought forward from future years with whether any mitigation can be taken to facilitate savings in the future. And there will, of course, be a further update in quarter two. Thank you.
councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, there's no surprise to this. We obviously, as we hopefully are emerging, you know, one-way street from COVID, that the impact on the budget is inevitable, the fact that we've lost income, we've spent elsewhere, and so it's no surprise we are where we are. Just two comments from me. One, I'm just curious about and perhaps could just be explained, which is the capital fund, the general fund for capital programme is forecast to underspend by £11.3 million, which is consistently seen for some years, and ditto the HRA capital programme also underspent by considerable amount, £8.4 million. And yet, if we go to the variance analysis, the total capital financing costs unusually are about £1.5 million over budget, and I'm just curious to know why it's costing us more when typically, as we have been for a number of years, underspending on the capital programme. That seems a curiously inconsistent number there. And just the second point is obviously a number of savings that we hope to realise, again, I think COVID-related, we haven't been able to achieve, but we're looking at £4.3 million savings in the current year, which now categorises as non-deliverable red. What impact does that have on this year's budget? That's me, thank you.
Has an adverse impact, obviously. It's worth stating, I think, that in some cases, the transformation work has occurred, but it no longer delivers the quantum of saving that was predicted because market disruption, for example, and changes to the way, changes to unit costs in some cases. So, they're good questions. In fact, I think rather than bounce them around, we may go back to Mr Donnelly now to ask for clarification on those points.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And so the pressure on the capital financing budget is a pressure we've identified and we're currently investigating. We will hope to mitigate against that, and we can provide further details once we've fully investigated how it's arisen. In respect of the red savings, so the financial impact of those red savings are included within the financial outturn forecast in the report.
I think Chief Executive wants to come in as well. Do you want to finish that point? Are you satisfied with that answer in terms of the technical point about them being included?
We might pick this up again, because I think we've got all the governance in about a week's time, so I think perhaps people will notice we'd like to explore a bit further. It does seem to be inconsistent, and it does sound like it's a bit of a surprise and they're investigating it.
I mean, the overall savings target is very, very high. To save £20 million out of a £140 million budget from a sort of standing start in January, February, even with the transformation money helping with that, it was always an ambitious target, and the ratio of delivery at the moment is similar to the last three years. So we've always been about 70%, and that's why we put a contingency figure in, because if you aim low, you'll get low and a bit lower than low. We've aimed high in order to try and balance the budget, but know that, you know, that people have been a bit optimistic in some of the areas and things always turn out to be a bit harder than you think. I think in the overall context, we're on a bit of a cusp, so it'll be interesting to see what half-year looks like and what, you know, the third quarter looks like. I think local government finance is in sort of greatest peril that I can think from the last few years, and it's going to be interesting to see what the government's response is to the peril which lies in local authorities' finance, and we're, you know, we are no exception to it. So, everybody knows inflation's rising, so we started our budget with very low inflation figures, you know, about 1% or something on most of our services. Bank of England is saying that inflation could be 4% by Christmas. The tightening of the labour market is having a significant implication, and there's been a long-term tightening around professional jobs and, you know, trying to get social workers, get planners, get other professional areas, but now there is a much wider scope of labour tightening, and, you know, first time in my career, been wondering about whether you can collect the rubbish in terms of getting enough drivers in the summer, and the pockets of labour market tension are growing, not declining. And then we have the sort of COVID impact, which is sort of unwinding. A lot of people sort of say managerial, it was easier to go into COVID than to come out into the recovery period in terms of the change which people are managing. So we've got a COVID impact on the workforce, got people who, you know, isolating or have family members been impacted. We're trying to pull the services back to pre-COVID standards. There's been a general impact of COVID on social care, both children's but particularly in adult social care, bubbling up into mental health, more dependency about mental health, bubbling up into increased demand from the hospital, the inability to do re-enablement services, you know, where people are on long NHS waiting lists, waiting for care. In terms of our customers, that affordability squeeze is meaning it's difficult to get money out of people in terms of, if you look at our adult social care budget, under recovery fees, and they start to struggle around council tax and business rates. The impact on the economy, you can see in our town centre, I just drove past the other day, that bicycle rack that's next to the station, there were sort of four ranks of bicycle double-decker rack that used to be full and counted 12 bikes in it in the middle of the day. And so you can just sort of see the impact on commuting and the impact in the town centre is enormous, and that will bubble through into potentially lost business rates or difficult to collect business rates or delayed business rates, and the car parking, which is in there. We know that the fuel price crisis is going to impact on us and maybe one of our companies as well, when you think about the miles that they drive. And we're getting pressure on care costs associated with the requirements to ensure that care workers are double vaccinated and the difficulty in the labour market in there. So I'm not here as a sort of, you know, let's bring all the doom into the room, but I just think there is a sort of perfect storm here. And without being political about it, you know, we look to government to respond to this in the settlement. They have announced they're putting off for another year, I think third year running, maybe another year, don't know whenever, the local government restructuring of, you know, finance, whether local authorities get more of their business rates, the redistribution between authorities. I'm a bit pleased, I think we might have been a net loser in that, so any delay is maybe a happy thing. But will the Treasury take on board the costs which we will have next year and this year, and of course, the national insurance rise as well? So, you know, we're getting concerned about the budget position. It may be this stuff starts to bubble out in quarter three, but it's worth saying to members, there is a very high level of concern in the management team about this.
I think it's worth saying, this is some of the most volatile market conditions, both financial resources and labour market conditions that have been experienced in quite some time, and actually, even the performance of the authority and how it deals with some of those issues in Q1 is likely to not be a particularly good guide to what happens in Q2 and Q3, to be candid, and I think it's incredibly difficult time to predict. And so it's fortunate that, as you said, Chief Executive, you know, we allocate and continue to allocate contingency budgets, and we have a much healthier reserves position now than we would have had, let's say, five years ago, when actually the risk of shocks like we're experiencing now would have been tremendously profound to the ability of the authority to continue to operate candidly, and we've seen up and down the country and indeed at the upper end of the county, authorities that are already unable to struggle in the financial conditions that we find ourselves, and actually that there are likely to be a great many more who experience profound existential difficulties as we move forward, I'm sure. councillor Ennis indicated some time ago.
Thank you, Chair. To carry on with that discussion, sorry, I thought I was taller than I was. Well, I mean, very much welcome the report and the open, transparent approach of the report as lead councillor for adult social care. I certainly like to thank the staff, I think, throughout the financial discussions and the performance and monitoring, we cannot forget and we must not be remiss to remember the people involved in delivering our services in the Reading area, and particularly as adult social care, I want to thank the staff in adult social care, which is the carers looking after vulnerable residents in their homes and in the care homes, and also to the many, and the activity centres, and many unpaid carers, the numerous unpaid carers looking after family members, particularly at this difficult time. Going on from what's been said, the Chief Executive, actually welcome the Chief Executive's budget's actually coming in under budget, you know, just... No, I was going to say that, absolutely. I just thought I'd put it out there, though. But I certainly firmly believe, I think, in the context of what we're looking at, and it's been raised, is that the overspend and risk of savings in adult social care and demand-led services, but particularly in my own area of adult social care, needs to be seen in a national context of the acute and serious problems that are facing adult social care and health departments up and down the country, and this was in some ways recognised with the, you know, trumpeting of the Johnson Plan or whatever it's called, his proposed plan to fund adult social care by raising taxes for working families. We want to stick to facts, really, and say there's no such plan, really, apart from raising national insurance from our residents who can do without it. He's never consulted on the plan, never consulted on the proposed non-existent plan to his own cabinet, although they won't admit it, some will, some won't. Before he planned to raise the taxes and the suggestion, he didn't consult his own MPs because numerous Conservative MPs shared the concerns of many, all Parliament, and he certainly didn't consult with local government, and that's Tory, Lib Dem or Labour, because Conservative councils are equally as concerned as what Labour wants and Lib Dem wants. I don't think it's a Green one, not sure if they've read the papers. And they are exasperated of all colours. Local government is exasperated with the Phantom Plan for adult social care transformation. There are huge concerns up and down the country, cross-party, because there are no, there's no money planned from the tax increases to go to adult social care in the first three years, there's no plan to do that, and with Health needing £10 billion... And with health needing ten billion pounds at least to meet their needs, there's a real possibility that no money will go from this plan to adult social care. And in fact, what could happen is that, you know, the Conservative tax raising government will propose further tax increases on residents in the form of the council tax precept. I suspect we'll be facing in February, January, a talk of an increased council tax to pay for the shortfall, the short term shortfallism, short termism in adult social care. I recently visited staff in care homes and in the activity centres in Reading when I was allowed and the excellent, the excellent work that's going on. And they are tired. They're tired physically, but they're tired. And they reported that social care has potentially changed forever post Covid. It will not be the same as before the pandemic. So some of the savings that we discussed before may not be achievable on this side of the pandemic and it's reflected in the risk to the savings. I certainly applaud the monitoring and adult social care, who's made commitments to strive to try and, you know, bring the savings into account. There's no, you know, not me, Gov, we're just going to keep spending sort of attitude. It's a realisation on to one hand of what's been faced by by adult social care and other demand led services. But also to make sure that the standards are maintained, the standards that elderly people, more and more now, and I use the word elderly, but there are vulnerable young people who are facing increased problems and more need for adult social care. And it's to maintain the standards and support them. That's what this council is about and it has to be. Local government, and I talk for local government actually, as much as I talk for this Labour government, a Labour Labour council, oh, I wish, a Labour council, that adults needing support need to be our, and children need to be our priority. I certainly applaud the continued bids, which is on item thirteen, in order to further work with hospitals and they're under acute pressure, a rapid community discharges, discharges from acute hospitals. That is so important and we need to work together to make sure we can do that. And also for social workers to incomplete unallocated mental health capacity assessment. So there is work going on to try and support using money, getting bids to support people in Reading who need it the most. I I welcome the regular public monitoring, I think we need it, of the adult social care spending and others. And so residents can see where the money's being spent. And I support the recommended actions on page three hundred and seventy eight. So thank you for that. And we need to see, get to the bottom of what the situation is and work with other councils to put pressure on the government to actually get a proper plan in place to support adult social care and health. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. I think it's worth reiterating the point you made there about the N I rise and actually in the absence of a plan about how that the money generated there will be spent, the only consequence thus far, we know, is that the the payroll tax, the payroll burden on local government will increase and on care homes and care providers will increase. And we think local government has, you know, lives in a state of financial peril. Well, you know, it's nothing compared to what many care homes and care providers have to endure. And so the the risks here are really myriad and need to be fought through before that kind of deadline date of the N I rise being implemented in April next year comes to be. Councillor Terry.
Thank you, Chair. That's a very sobering discussion that we've had and we need to keep an eye on the future. In all of this discussion, you know, I completely support that there needs to be a plan for adult social care. But children often are not mentioned, funding for children's services isn't mentioned. And yet it is an incredibly important piece of of support that we do in society to make sure that children and young people are protected and can grow up and fulfil their potential. And perhaps we'll come back to that discussion another time. It's not for now. I would just like to commend to policy committee supporting the proposals that have been set out by British Futures for Children this evening in this report. One of the things that we do know is that naught to two year olds clearly have had issues around their development because they, with parents who might not be able to get out, get to the usual centres, the support networks, et cetera, that they've had there in the past. That won't be true for all children, but it will be the case for some children. And we know that this is a very, very important time of our lives, naught to. And if we fail to develop well at this time, we'll fail to develop as we hit school. And if we're not hitting school in a good place, then we will see children continue to fail. And the knock on effect of that for all of us and for our futures is too important for us to not take care of this at this moment in time. So having prudently put some Covid grant aside in an earmarked reserve, this is absolutely the right time for us to be taking that that resource forward and ensuring that we do our best for our babies really and our children. Equally, I'm sure my colleague will talk about schools recovery. Again, we're going to put additional resources into supporting adolescent mental health and and our corporate parenting role, also putting the resources in to support our children in care in terms of their, particularly their mental health and wellbeing. They've been through a lot. We had some very resilient children. We've got some remarkable evidence of some children who've done really well on online learning, for example, because effectively it's like one to one tuition for them and that's what they needed. But nonetheless, there are a significant number of our children and young people who haven't done so well during this period. And it, you know, the schools will do their recovery, but we also need to be there to support them as this impinges on their wellbeing. So this is an important investment that we're making, ensuring that we're doing the very best that we can with the resources available to us to ensure that our children and young people have the best support they possibly can in order to ensure that this particular time of our lives doesn't hold them back in the future. This is a, you know, an important investment to make sure that we don't incur further costs down the line because if we don't do this, we will. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Before I go to councillor Pearce, I have councillor White.
Thank you, Chair. As the report says, adult social care is predicted to overspend by three point seven million pounds, which is obviously a big concern. We Greens support spending extra money on increasing the capacity of the council in adult social care and public health to ensure people are getting the support they need and to tackle this overspend. With the N H S health checks, for example, mentioned in the business cases, the longer people wait for a checkup, the higher the risk that a condition will deteriorate and people's health will suffer. Prevention is definitely better than cure on our children. As the report says, lockdowns have had a negative impact on our young children and their development. Lockdowns have had a negative impact on our our schoolchildren and lockdowns have had a negative impact on the mental health of our children, especially our looked after children. So Greens support investing in our children as the, in line with the recommended action to give them all the best start in life possible. So we will be supporting the recommended actions in the report.
Thank you. Councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Chair. The the chief executive painted a very bleak picture of all these things, but a very thin silver lining. It does make teaching economics very easy with all those things. So there is a tiny bit there. I did just want to talk about some of the Covid recovery issues in in schools. I think and hope we can all agree that the best place for young people to be to learn is in schools. And there's been a huge vote of confidence from our parents and young people since schools have gone back. The the latest full weekly figures that we've we've got, we're currently slightly above the national average in attendance for primary school. We're two percent above the national average for attendance in secondary school and we're six percent above the national average for attendance in our special schools. So councillor White's pointing out, pupils missing school has been disadvantageous, but they are back and back in numbers at the moment. We continue to discuss with our head teachers, the best way to utilise any new funds that that come on board will be guided by evidence and the government in rare praise of things that they're doing in education. But their use of things like the Education Endowment Foundation is very welcome and we use that as well. And our head teachers are the ones that know their pupils and communities best and to decide exactly how to best utilise any any funds. Locally, the the early intervention offer will help those people struggling with mental health issues. Our summer camps have been incredibly successful with various activities and high attendance. The winter grant extension was also welcomed, although as several of my colleagues have already mentioned, that has been really completely wiped out for many by the cut in universal credit and the increase in national insurance in the last couple of weeks. So that money's going to need to go a lot further. So we're confident our schools are doing all they can and our leaders doing all they can in what are incredibly difficult and testing times for schools as they've been in the last two years.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Councillor McElroy.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to pass some specific comments on the items for approval at two point seven and two point eight. So on two point seven, the budget environment. Yes, sure, makes sense. Thanks to the officer for the work and for teaching me a new word. On two point eight, the bids for Covid funding. Gosh, the aims of these projects are undeniably worthy, I think, for all the stuff that my councillor colleagues have been saying here tonight. And I just wanted to thank everyone involved with conceiving of the work and also for the pleasure of being able to read about about it and what is being considered. I guess my question is, I see references in the in the two bids to impact measures, objectives and M and E, which is great. Even though the details are a bit light and sometimes unspecific. And my question is, how independent and transparent would these evaluations be? And does the council or will the council, if they were approved, have much visibility on the eventual results against those stated objectives? And any under, any working out that would underpin those results? Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McElroy. It's good job you used Mr Donnelly's time to achieve the same ends as a dictionary. Having reached the end of the debate, we'll go back to Mr Donnelly. Anything you wanted to come back to there, particularly, I think, some points probably from councillor Stevens and councillor McElroy.
Yes, so I can add a bit more about the capital programme. So capital schemes in the capital programme have different funding sources. So it may be capital grants, capital contributions, capital receipts or indeed external borrowing. So the revenue capital financing budget that deals with those schemes that are funded by borrowing, it doesn't refer to those that are funded by grants, capital receipts, contributions. So it is possible that you can underspend on your capital programme and not have a corresponding underspend on your capital financing budget. So we will continue to investigate that pressure, but it is possible that you can have a mismatch between the capital and the revenue budget. In terms of councillor McElroy's points around the bids, I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer some of those, but perhaps I can talk to my service colleagues who will be delivering those and we can come back to policy committee.
I'll take them away, I think, and maybe get officers to write direct to councillor McElroy is probably the most most appropriate. Thank you, Mr Donnelly. So everybody's okay with the recommended actions? Seems to be the gist I've got there. Fantastic. And that takes us to the end of the public part of the meeting this evening. So I need to move under item fourteen, the customary motion to exclude the press and public as printed. And I I I thank those who have attended and please, you know, clear the gallery. Yes.